Okay, thanks Pam. So we're off. Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board meeting of October 25th, 2023. My name is Doug Marshall and as the Chair of the Amherst Planning Board, I am calling this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available livestream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. This Planning Board meeting is being held in the Town Room at the Amherst Town Hall. However, this is a hybrid meeting. Members of the Planning Board and members of the public pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and as extended again by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 may access this meeting via Zoom. The Zoom meeting link is available on the meeting agenda posted on the Town website's calendar listing for this meeting. Or you can go to the Planning Board's webpage and click on the most recent agenda, which has the Zoom link at the top of the page. Be aware that the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual meeting unless otherwise required by law. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the Town of Amherst website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, please answer affirmatively whether you are participating remotely or in person. Bruce Coldem is not here. We do expect him probably a little bit later. Red Hartwell. Jesse Major. I Doug Marshall am present. Janet McGowan. Johanna Newman is notified as she will be absent. And Karen Winter. In person. Okay, so in case not everybody could hear on the microphone or the recording, we are all here this evening with the exception of Johanna and Bruce at the moment. For those participating remotely, please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment. I will hope to see your request up on the screen and call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. Planning Board members who are present in the Town Room should also raise their hands when they wish to speak and the microphone will be passed to you. We have two microphones in the room, one at each end of the table. The general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the Board will not respond to comments during the general public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting if deemed appropriate by the Chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited or raise your hand if you are present in the Town Room. If you've joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the Planning Board Chair. If a speaker does not comply with the guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. So our first item on tonight's agenda, the time is 6:05, is a public comment period. Do we have any members of the public in present or on Zoom who wish to make a comment? I do typically at this time, I read the names of the people on the Zoom call. The public members, I see Jennifer Taub, I see Lily Bruce, I see Pam Rooney, and Susannah Musbratt. There are a couple of members of the public present in the room with us. Okay, not seeing any hands from anyone of the public. We will go on to our second item, which is a discussion with UMass representatives, Nancy Baphon and Tony Marulis. Nancy and Tony, welcome to our meeting this evening. The purpose of inviting you here was to answer some questions that the Planning Board members put together and I believe sent to you in advance. And also, we wanted to discuss how the town and university can work together to develop more housing. Now, I want to preface this by saying it had been my intention to step aside and let the Vice Chair or the Clerk moderate the discussion, but neither of them are in the room yet, at least. So I will moderate if to the extent I need to, but I will express no opinions. So with that, maybe the way to do this, we, not everybody who's listening probably knows what the questions were. And do you have Nancy and Tony, do you have answers prepared for each question such that it might make sense for you to read the question and then read the answer? Or do we, would that make sense?
Yeah, I think.
Go ahead Nancy.
Sorry, good afternoon, evening. I think we were hoping for more of a conversation and we can, we'll have some specific answers throughout.
Okay, so maybe we will.
Kick it off.
Maybe I will read a question. You can start to answer and we can have a discussion.
A little intro?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So, hi everyone, I'm Nancy Baphon, I'm Associate Vice Chancellor for University Relations.
I'm Tony Marulis, Executive Director of Community and Strategic Initiatives.
So together, Tony and I tag team Community Relations and we're really happy to be here this evening, so thank you for that invitation. We did get those questions ahead of time, which we really appreciate. And wanted to at least just start by talking a little bit about the planning process on campus, because it seemed like a number of the questions were about how projects start and get approved on campus. And so I thought that would be a good place for us to kick this off. So we do have a planning department on campus and they are responsible for looking at what our campus needs are and figuring out how we can best meet those needs while also, you know, staying within the parameters of the master plan that was created in 2012, I believe it was. There is not necessarily one path that a project can take at the university. Projects develop through lots of different ways. Sometimes it could be, excuse me, a dean advocating to the chancellor, the provost that they have, you know, they might need a new building to help meet the needs of the workforce in the state. That's in part how we got our computer science building, for instance. Sometimes we hear from campus support units that are trying to meet the needs of our undergraduate and graduate students and they can't do it within the facilities. So that idea may come up through a certain Vice Chancellor, could come up in any number of ways. The planning department is also always looking at these things and trying to figure out how can we continue to advance the campus. And then projects go through a fairly lengthy review process. Ultimately, you know, there's approval at many different levels on the campus and most of the projects also have to be approved through the Board of Trustees as well, especially when we're talking, you know, the larger capital projects. So it's, yeah, a number of the questions really looking at kind of what is that flow? And there isn't really one way that that happens. There's lots of, lots of different ways and ultimately it goes up through campus leadership up to the system leadership and the Board of Trustees. I think some of the other questions focused more on some of the numbers around our enrollment and housing and so I'm going to pass that off to Tony to.
Which is great because Bruce just walked in, right? So the timing, I think, was really great because a lot of the questions that Bruce had up on the what would be good to know, we got it as a, I think, a slide or, you know, something that was online, but we also.
Hey Tony.
Seen the picture.
Can I just interrupt you a moment? The time is 6:11, Bruce just walked in the room. So with that, Bruce, I'm going to turn this over to you to moderate this discussion.
Okay.
Hi Bruce, how are you? So I'm going to hand out some, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Let's just, just pass these around and the last can come to me. So we wanted to break out some numbers for everybody, some based upon Bruce's questions, what would be good to know? And then add some historical context to the UMass enrollment and bed count on campus. And so you'll notice here that we were looking at tenure snapshots starting in 1982. We would have done 83 had we known we were going to get the updated numbers on enrollment for 2023 in addition to what's on the back, which is our off-campus housing data for this semester. So let me kind of just start by noting a couple of things. And the reason why we went back to 82 is because it's interesting to note that from a raw in-person number of students that we had in the area at the time, we're really not far off historically to where we are now. And I'll break that out just because maybe this table might be a little bit confusing. But going back to 1982, our in-person enrollment was 24,939. And we are pulling that from data that you'll see on the back, all the sources are there from our Office of Institutional Research and that office name has changed, which, and I don't remember it, but Nancy can correct me a little bit later. As you can see, you know, over the first, you know, 1992, 2002, there wasn't that much in the way of fluctuation with those numbers. As you can see in 2002, continuing a professional education, which we're listing as online right there, had 700 students. That was really the beginning of what our UWW program has become now, which is fully online with, as you can see, robust numbers, starting in 2012, 5,600 to now 4,390. That of course affects our enrollment, right? So a lot of, you know, everyone is seeing the, our numbers go up and we're over 30,000 students, but a significant number of them are online, right? So I can't remember the percentage off the top of my head, some math whizzes I think are going to come up with this, but 4,523 people, 4,523, I can't say and, I was told by the nuns that taught me that you never say and. But 4,523 students are completely online, which means that they could be anywhere and they are, you know, professionals, they are perhaps homeowners. And I bring this up because as we talk about this from Planning Board purposes, the effect and the impact of those 4,500 is very different on our local population than our undergraduate number, for example, right? Our undergraduate in-person, so I want to bring that up. The other thing is you'll note, we've broken out the grad full-time and part-time students, right? And part of the reason for that is, is that a graduate part-time student could be someone like me. Actually, I am in a grad program right now, right? But I am a homeowner in Pelham, so I will factor into these numbers here, but I'm also a professional here that, you know, again, I think that when we think about impact, we're thinking about our full-time in-person student population. And so that's why, you know, we've broken this out a little bit. And I think from a historical context standpoint, if you look at our full-time bachelors and full-time grad students, those numbers are somewhat similar to the numbers that we had in 1982. I think that's kind of fascinating just from an in-person perspective. So we continue to grow, but, but those numbers are largely online and that will continue. So our numbers will always creep up. As you can see, you know, I've listed the number of undergraduate beds that are on the side. Housing production was really quite slow until about 2006. And at that point, we've had more than 3,500 beds. I think when you total this all up, it'll be over 4,000 over here. Part of that has been new production with North Apartments in 2006, Commonwealth Honors College in 2012. We've done a lot with doing above design capacity within our current existing buildings. Our normal capacity is 13,500. We found space through economy triples and converting lounges into about 14,000 beds as reflected in the 2022 numbers. And then just this year, as you know, the project on Mass Ave, which the Fieldstone Slate, that undergraduate apartment building, which is being managed by a third party, has about 624 units in there, not all of them are occupied right now, but it has the capacity for that, not units, I take that back, beds, 624 beds. Grad, the Fieldstone Artisan, which will open, which is finished now, but will open next school year, next academic year, has about 200 beds. And then we have 300 beds for family housing up at University Village, which has opened in phases starting last academic year. So with that total capacity, we have gone up to about 15,000, counting our grad, undergrad, and family housing beds. If you go to the back, one of the things that we're able to share with you and we're really excited about over the last couple of years since COVID, we've been able to better capture data from who's living off campus, right? This is something that prior to the last couple of years and prior to COVID, we had really no good data on. If you go back to the housing production plan that the town did in 2015, I think the estimate was about 4,500 students, graduate, undergraduate students were living off campus. Now we can give you better and closer numbers. They may not be 100% accurate, but I think that we're, you know, within, you know, 2% or 3%. And I think that's, you know, really quite important. And so as you can see, we've broken this down by where students are living locally and given, you know, local, we have defined it, Amherst and Pelham, Belcher Town, Hadley, Shute's, very elaborate, Sunderland. Those in Amherst and Pelham in the 01002 area code, zip code that is, are 8938. I could tell you that there are only 21 that are living in Pelham. So, so just to be really clear, what 01002 is here is really referring to Amherst, not my town. The undergrads living locally within all of those communities, 7251, and in Amherst and Pelham, 6262. And again, take away 11 from there and that's the Amherst number. And some of those students are living at home, you know, as we know that we have a lot of students from Amherst Regional High School who have homes that are here and they also get counted in this number. It's not a major factor, however. And then our graduate students living locally and that includes part-time students, again, like me, 3475, and in Amherst and Pelham, 2662. So, you know, we hope that this gives you a better kind of snapshot. Now, one of the things that I think is interesting for you all to think about, and I only bring this up as a caveat, is that, you know, the numbers, while very similar in in-person numbers from 1982 to now, in terms of that in-person number, I think the geographic spread and where our students are living is very, very different, right? With the number of new units that have been put online by private developers over the last 10 to 15 years, I mean, going back to 2008, and I think Boltwood Place was really our first new development in town, I think there are about 1,500 units there. That has not necessarily stemmed the tide, as we know, of the number of students that are living here. And in fact, I think that what we've seen is Amherst has added more, not only have they added more capacity, but more students are living close to campus, right? It's a proximity issue, which I think in some ways has cost towns like Sunderland that, that student rental business, right? And so it's surprising, we were looking at our numbers today, Sunderland only had about 1,000 undergraduate, I mean, I'm sorry, 550 undergraduate students that were living in Sunderland and another 550 or so grad students, staggering considering the inventory in Sunderland. So Amherst is absorbing more, which, you know, also I think accounts for some of the things that you're seeing with regard to single-family homes, either still staying as rentals or, you know, in some cases, new conversions. So the other thing is, one other thing I just wanted to mention was, you know, there's a lot of talk about demand on campus. We think that that is tied to a number of different things that we're seeing across the country. There are more students during COVID and post-COVID who wanted the on-campus experience. That has been a trend that has ticked upward. And then secondly, I think of note, is when the pandemic happened, when students were sent home from the university, university refunded a large portion of the residential life bill for that semester in which they were sent home. So there was a rebate there and I think that, you know, there is of course, the wise consumer that students and parents are now thinking about, you know, the safety of living on campus versus living off campus, because that same, that same courtesy wasn't extended, you know, by those who were in 12-month leases off campus. And we heard a lot about that during that period of time. So, you know, there is something that that's also protective about that, you know, and that demand for on-campus living. So again, just contextualizing a lot of what we've all heard. But, you know, we do know that, you know, we have a better sense of the numbers than we've ever had before. Yeah, I think that's, that's where I'll stop for now and I guess there'll probably be more questions.
I guess. Let's start with questions from the board. Let's try questions of clarification first, just so that we, rather than comments and so. Yes.
That's all excellent, really helpful information, especially the numbers. I guess I'm wondering about the UMass's thought process, if there is one about what's the right number of beds to be on campus? So, so in an ideal world, would you house everybody or is there some target percentage that you go after?
If I could interrupt, Jesse, what I'd prefer would be questions of clarification first and then larger questions like the one you're, I just want to make sure that people understand the data that's presented and then move to the larger questions like that.
Hold my question.
Nate, that's.
Thanks Tony. One question with the beds, the 3,500 beds, is that a net gain or is that, is that taken into account? For instance, you know, Fieldstone, you know, was any beds lost or there? University Village is that, you know, is this all new beds?
These are all new.
Yep, that's a net gain of beds.
Right.
Here, so it's a net gain because when the previous North Village was, was taken down, we lost those beds, we have added those beds now and there, there's more capacity at family housing than there was before. So, so there was a gain there. So we have about 4,000 that we've, 4,000 in terms of what we've listed here, even if you take away the graduate school from Lincoln Apartments and North Village, it's still over 3,500. This is just the full bed count of what has been added. So that, that's a great question and we can clarify that a little bit more.
Now the questions of clarification. I've got a couple, but I'll wait till the end. Maybe this is the end.
So when you said that there's 500 beds, that's when you put three people in a double or you put a bedroom in a common room, which I, I've had friends of mine that's happened to their kids and they've transferred. So that seems sort of misery to me, but, and you know, I think I was at a meeting of the Housing Trust, probably before COVID, where 800 extra students accepted. And there was a big question about where they come because they're first-year undergrads. And I think that happened again recently. So what do you do in those situations when you get a lot more acceptances? Where do they go?
Trying to get questions of clarification. You'll get used to me if I ever do this again, this is the way I work. I have a couple, we'll be quick it seems, so we'll get to both of you momentarily. You said that since COVID, there was a trend and more students wanted, I wrote down, on-campus living experience. Did I understand that correctly? So that means on-campus, it just doesn't mean living in rental housing around town, it means on-campus. Is that, do we understand you correctly?
I think what we're saying is, is that just in general, there's just more demand for on-campus housing. It doesn't mean that we're not meeting it, it's just that we're hearing more students who say that they want it, right? So we do house all of our first-year students. And about, I think, 83% of our sophomores are housed on campus as well. And then after that, you know, it's, it's a mix and there's, I think, a lottery system that goes into that. I don't want to speak incorrectly on that. But unlike in years past, and if you go back to 2017, when we were at a capacity of 13,500, we did have a 3% vacancy. And I'm saying that off the top of my head and I'm 100% sure I'm right about that. So, so think, you know, there are trend lines and trend lines have changed around student experience and wanting to be on campus. And if they can't get there to campus, what I was also making the point of Bruce, just, you know, for clarification here, you know, the idea of Sunderland not having as many bodies as they may have once had compared to Amherst now taking, you know, having more, it's because students, students want proximity if they can't be on campus.
Can I just add to that in terms of, you know, the trends a little bit post, whatever, I don't know if we're post-COVID yet or not, but I think, you know, we are, the students who are on campus now have, were all affected either in college or high school by COVID. And so one of the things that we are seeing, not just about housing, but about a lot of things, the students are looking for those experience, those traditional college experiences. And so I think that's part of why they, there's this notion of we want to live on campus because they've lost something, whether it was through high school or their early years of college. I've got two in college right now and I'm seeing that in both of, coming out in both of them in different ways. So it's really, it's, part of it is that, you know, the financial piece of it and part of it is they lost, they think they lost something and so they're trying to have that experience. So it'd be interesting to see what happens over the next few years as those students who are in high school in COVID hit, what their expectations are for college, you know, two, three, four years from now.
Thanks Nancy. So that's a question of clarification, Karen.
So to look at the numbers, I think what we're really concerned about is zeroing in on the amount of particularly undergraduates that we have and the capacity of houses that you have. And so right now, it looks like you have almost 23,000 undergraduates for the bachelors and you have 14,600 beds. So it's a huge sort of pool of undergraduates that are looking for houses, right? And that's, and so we called this meeting, I think, so that's a clarification thing. So I don't know if I can go on, but that's what we really want to zero on is how can we solve this? Yeah, okay.
Backing up, I was starting to ask, is there a target percentage that UMass works towards? Like, yes, you built 3,500 beds in that period, was that with an intentional, well, we need to meet this percentage? Or is it not that specific? Is it more just nebulous, we have this opportunity to build new beds? And the second half of that question is, if you had all the money and all the land, would you try and house all the 12,000 delta between students and beds currently? Or is that not the goal?
So it's a great question. So the number of beds that have been created since 2006 roughly mirror our plan for growth going back 10 years, which was, I think, you know, raising the undergraduate total about 3,000, right? So, so we've, we've met that, there's always been that gap. And that's again, one of the reasons why we've, you know, mentioned the historical data here. Two, two major things to keep in mind. Number one, state institutions generally do not house all of their students and flagships, institutions and larger state institutions generally do not house all of their students. And as a percentage of students that we house, we house over 60%. I think our number is between 63 and 65% in terms of what we house. And I could be wrong because that, that has fluctuated over the years, you know, from, from 60 to 65. And I could be wrong because that that has fluctuated over the years, you know, from from 60 to 65. So, you know, as a as a percentage, I think that we are in the top, top five or six of institutions of our size. And the number of students that we house. The other aspect of this is that the the housing journey is a continuum, right, for for many of our students. And and so living off campus is part of the experience. The residential life experience is very important, particularly for student success. For the for first year students, you know, again, it's around the sense of belonging and bringing them in. And so that that is really intentional. And then, again, most of our sophomores do stay on campus. But the continuum is something that has always been a part of the. Public higher ed experience, and I don't think that that's ever going to change. As far as a target number. You know, these are conversations that happen all the time. And Nancy, jump in at any time. I don't have to hog this. But I think the one thing that we, there are many factors that come into play. Any new housing production will take a few years to come online, no matter what we do. So that's number one. We've chosen on the Mass Ave project to look at a public-private partnership opportunity. Because we are, you know, have to be concerned about our debt ratio, right? I think we can't go above 8%. And, you know, we had a lot of academic buildings that had gone up over the last decade or so. To meet the needs of our students and their student success. So the public-private partnership was one one option that that we looked at and, you know, we did this, this last go around. That, you know, took a significant amount of time to get off the ground. And it still doesn't really meet our needs in the sense that even by adding those those units. We were still not able to take off many of the. Older units that need rehabilitation. So there's, there's a lot to this, you know. So even if we expanded, you know, say tomorrow, we, you know, did Nidrima Genie and expanded by 3,000. We probably at that same time have to take many units offline that, that, you know, are past their useful life that need real tender loving care.
If I can just add to that, you know, if you, you know, looking at the numbers, the vast majority of our housing stock is. Older than it should be. And it also is not providing necessarily what the students are looking for. And so when we're talking about recruiting students, what their living conditions are like is certainly something that's very important to them. And they're going to schools all around the country, and they're seeing lots of different options. And so that's a really critical point that Tony made that as we, you know, do add housing, at some point, we need to take down some of the the. Existing housing offline and renovate so that we can better meet the needs of the students. So it is going to be this, this ongoing challenge of. How do you make sure we have, you know, the housing that that we need to have? And making sure that the buildings are where we need them to be.
And I just want to add, you know, having a son who's at Syracuse. My daughter was at UMass. You know, every place is facing the same issue. You know, the housing stock at Syracuse is terrible. It's really bad. And and that's an expensive school. So the, so, you know, I bring this up because I think that that's one of the things that, you know, with. With the way that the trends in higher ed, when, you know, with the explosion of students going, you know, to. Four-year institutions, many schools built a lot in the 1960s, 1970s, 1980s. And, you know, now with this aging stock that they haven't been able to keep up on, we're all facing some of the same trends.
Okay, Janet, and then Karen.
I sort of changed my question. Are, is there more, do you have plans to build more dorm space, like in the next? Do you, I mean, are there dorm beds in the pipeline? And could you tell us those numbers? It seems like your students want to be on campus. They were in tents demanding on campus housing. So you have a plan? And what does the next five or 10 years look like in terms of adding beds?
So, you know, I think that everything's being looked at, Janet, but I don't think that I can give you a definitive answer on that right now. And so, so there, you know, options are being considered. I think the institution is both taking a breath after the construction of. You know, both P3 projects, right, the University Village and then also Fieldstone. We have a new chancellor who has also just really. Come in, although he's, you know, on the ground and running. I don't think that he has been able to think that through yet with his senior staff. So more to come on that. But just on that note, I mean, one of the things that we do, Nancy and I meet with the town manager and the assistant town manager on a weekly basis. We have other plugin meetings with. You know, with some of our. Staff from design and construction and and facilities and some planning folks that are meeting with DPW and and others. So, you know, as these plans do develop, you know, we're talking them through in real time. But at this, at this time, we have no nothing firm that I can talk about.
Karen.
Yeah, by the way, the the new dorm, I think, is very attractive. We're really pleased walking around. It's great to see. But Jesse's question was, in the ideal world, would you want to have a larger percentage? Of students living on campus? Would you want to? I mean, I realize that this would be like magic and every country is having, I mean, every college is having that problem. But you see, as you expand the number of students in order to get, you know, universities are growing, the gap is getting bigger. And we're, in some ways, we're wondering. What needs to be done in order to address this, what you can see and we can see as a stress on the town? I understand perfectly what's happening. I understand that you're, you know, the university's debt limit and things like that. But who is ultimately? Who are the entities at the university that are saying? This gap is too big. We have to push for a dorm. We have to get the Senate or something that, you know, we have to have the funds. Who are the people that need to do that?
So so a couple of things. I mean, one of the reasons why we've broken out the numbers this way and to show the in-person physical population is to to show that the gap has not really changed in terms of physical numbers and percentage. No. And so if you, again, one of the things about the, you know, 31,750 number is that those online students, because they're online and fully online. They don't have the impact on the housing market. In the same way as the in-person undergraduate students do, right? And so I think that that's an important distinction to make. 22,813 are the number of undergraduates. There are about 14,000 students that are on campus. You see what I'm, see, so we broke it out because I, yeah. But what, but that's always been the case. So if you go back to 1982, our bachelor's program had 19,226, and we had about 11,000 beds. We've always had a gap. One of the things that I was mentioning before. Is that one of the the things that we have seen is with more housing production in Amherst. And then existing rental, existing rentals never went away with more housing production, right? Some may have been, you know, converted back to single-family homes, but that didn't happen in a major way. And and there have been many more that have been purchased with the with the express purpose of of renting them. You're seeing more students in Amherst for sure, right? So the geographic spread of those that are living off campus, we probably have very few that are living in North Hampton now. But in 1982, I would bet that there were a lot more in North Hampton.
So yes, there's always been a gap. It does seem like the last 10 years. It has increased some, and you guys have made beds to. Make the same percentage, which leaves the town to pick up that percentage too, essentially, right? Which is really what we're talking about. And and I think a lot of our conversations that I've been involved in are really about the pressure now of housing being converted, converted from single-family to rentals. That's really one of the issues we're trying to deal with. What I wanted to ask you guys, and maybe you aren't in all the planning meetings. Is part of the discussion of the UMass planning? Consequences for the town of Amherst at all? Not only in student rentals, but also issues like young faculty can't afford to live in Amherst, right? I mean, I've been here 17 years. I could barely afford to live in town when we got here. Now there's no chance because of the rental market. And so is that a conversation that happens? I feel like UMass is not going to solve that problem. That'd be great, but that's not realistic. I'm wondering if that is just part of the discussion.
Absolutely. And and, you know, we have a lot of conversations around the, you know, housing for undergraduate students. But we have just as many conversations about housing for faculty and staff. Especially, you know, since the pandemic and the way the real, real estate market has. Changed so drastically. It is a real issue and one that we are looking at all kinds of ideas on. So it is, everything is on the table for that. It's big.
And like you all, you know, we spend. Countless hours, Nancy and I, talking about this and thinking about this and working with our colleagues across campus and off campus as well, you know, around this issue. I mean, like, we, we, there are a number of things that that factor in. And faculty and staff housing is incredibly important. I think that one, you know, we're seeing a lot of different pressures coming on the market. You know, people that have moved here that are able to work remotely. Even a small percentage move, you know, changes the pressures in a in a significant way. But we do know from, you know, conversations with real estate agents and with. Those who, you know, are property managers that they're seeing. More folks from out of town than ever before, you know, wanting to live here because they can. And why not, right? I mean, in many ways, I think that the issue with housing, both from the student perspective and from those that are moving in that are helping to drive up the, you know, the market is is one of success, right? I mean, and I, and I mean that because people want to live here. It's beautiful. There's, there's the, you know, cultural amenities that go along with that. There's the opportunities to, you know, to retire here in place. There's, there's so many different things that that come into this. So it is a conversation. I can say, and I don't think it's a secret because he's already said this at the community breakfast and at other forums. You know, the chancellor's thinking about this in a big way, as are the other five college presidents, right? And so I do believe that everyone is feeling the pressure. I will also say, last week I was down at the Western Mass EDC Developers Conference when, you know, some young professionals that were in early-stage financing, just about to move to the next stage. Who are here because of the university and because of the the type of talented workforce that's attracted here. They're struggling with the fact that they can't, you know, find the housing for the people that, you know, they want to hire. So it may force them to move, you know. So we do have these struggles and I, and I think. You know, we're aware of it. And I also know that, you know, we want to be part of the solution to it. It's just not easy.
So at this point, I think I want to think about how to manage the this conversation going forward. I came in late. I apologize for that. I also have been away for five weeks and my head in a totally different place. So this is a bit of a leap. We have. Do we have a time when we want to complete this meeting? Is it? Is there, is there other, is there other business?
So Bruce, most of these in-person meetings, we've tried to keep to about two hours. We do have a couple of items on the agenda after this. One is. Probably a presentation from Nate and Chris to talk about the ideas for a housing overlay. That they have prepared and for our request. And then Fred was going to talk about some of the tax advantages to owner occupancy and subdivisible dwellings. So my, in my head, although I hadn't said it, if we can finish this up by the top of the hour. That'll leave us an hour for those other things. And if we want to extend those, great. But I, I hope we can get through this conversation in another 15 minutes.
That's what I'm after. Chris, I'm also note that we have five, six people in the audience online and we've got. Three people in the room. I want to give some opportunity to. I think I do. I, it might be in 15 minutes that we have to take that. The public comment or questions on this somehow separately. But I think I would ask people to think now whether. We have five or six, five or 10 minutes at the end, between 5:20 and 5:00 past the hour. For public comment or public questions. I'll see how that goes. That will be my aim. So that means we've got 10 minutes before we go into that kind of format. Chris?
So I just wanted to mention to Nancy and Tony that we are going to be discussing the possibility of rezoning some land on University Drive. And we know that that kind of butts up against university land. And so we'd like to open a conversation about places where the town of Amherst can help to increase the housing stock. That might be located near places where the university might also consider increasing housing stock. And that's not only University Drive, but it might also be North Pleasant Street as North Pleasant Street comes into the university. So I just wanted to put that out on the table and suggest that you may want to stay for part of that second conversation or catch up with us later about what we talked about. Thank you.
And Chris, I, just because I probably want to go home. But, but we will catch up. I think the one, one thing to note on both of those locations, going back to the 2013 Towngown. Steering Committee. When U3 Advisors was hired by both the town and the university. Those were two of the four options for housing that were discussed and identified. University Drive and what we, at that time, were calling the Gateway. Mass Ave was another, and then also University Village. So, so all of this, I think, you know, those conversations, I think, were, you know, would be welcome.
I want to ask, is there anybody in the public who feels they want to ask a question? I'm going to give people 30 seconds to 45 seconds to ask a question if they put their hands up. They have to do it right now, but do it in the next five minutes and I'll know. Okay, Elizabeth, I will get to you. It's just a note. It helps me manage the remaining time. That's all. Janet?
So I'm glad you mentioned the Towngown Committee because everybody talks about it, but no one can say what happened to it or what it sort of seemed to have petered out. But this isn't a formal ask, but a lot of us have been on the planning board talking about ways to work with. UMass about these issues in not just, we appreciate you coming in, but kind of a more, you know, detailed way. So if there was, you know, one of our members, esteemed members, had suggested that if we did more housing on University Drive. Maybe UMass would build some more housing on the other side, their side, and utilize all those beautiful parking lots don't get used unless there's a football game. And so maybe we could do some joint planning on what would that look like? And so is that in the realm of possibility to sort of work with more planning professionals at UMass and say, okay, we're talking about this? What are your ideas? I also just want to throw it out because I know there's some people from UMass here is that. I feel like students need to be part of any conversation we have about student housing and, you know, rezoning and things like that. Because there are stakeholders like everybody else. But is there a way? I don't want to revive the Towngown Committee, which I think was 30 members. But is there a way for us to work more collaboratively with, in the planning professionals?
So Janet, that's a great question. So a couple of things. I mean, UTAC is a little bit different than the Towngown Steering Committee because UTAC came out of that. Yeah, we don't want to bring that one back necessarily. That was, that was a little unwieldy. But the, within our strategic partnership agreement, which was just signed with the town, one of the things that is on the. List of priorities is to have joint planning meetings. So this is something that, you know. Nancy and I manage with the town manager. We certainly won't be the only people in the room. You know, the right people will be there. And, you know, to identify priorities and ways in which we can work together, that will be the place that that happens. I don't know how that will work as it relates to. The planning board. You know, it is, this is more arranged around professional staff after priorities are identified. But, but stay tuned because I think that there will be formal ways in which that happens.
I know we have a list of questions here. I think I'd be interested to have anybody, members of the, of the, of the board who feel that some of these questions, I, I look at it quickly. I see that some of them have been answered. Some of them are questions that don't need to be necessarily answered publicly. They, simply a matter of who is the right person to talk to and so forth.
I think we answered a lot of those, Bruce, before you came in actually with Nancy's opening statement and then with our numbers.
Thank you. Well, in that case, I'll ask, seeing nobody. The, on the sheet, Tony, that you've given, over three, over thirty-five hundred beds have been added on campus. I think Nate asked whether they knew whether it's a net gain and the answer was yes.
No, what, what I said was that the, to be very clear, the net gain is North Apartments, Commonwealth Honors College, the above the design capacity and the six hundred twenty-four beds for Fieldstone Slate. The two hundred for Artisan, which is not open yet, but is complete. And the three hundred beds at University Village are replacement for graduate students. So it's still over thirty-five hundred. The total that you'll see here is over four thousand. Yeah, slight, slight net gain, but, but it's, but there are some replacements in the grad school and, and family housing.
And, and these, these five listed bullets are all housing developments initiated by UMass. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So we, we have other things that are happening around by private developers and.
That's correct.
Okay, I, I've got some of those in my head. I'm thinking, this is a question I guess now, about public-private development collaboratives. I've talked to a number of, I, I made a, I am in the process of trying to talk to people in your positions in, in towns and universities in about fifteen towns around the country that are similar to Amherst. So I'm, I'm halfway, no, I'm a quarter, a half way through. I've got some sense that some places like Charlottesville, for example, have recently committed quite heavily to public-private partnerships, either by the, in those various ways, of course, that what I think in Charlottesville is the university's providing the land. And then I think they are perhaps involved in the selection of the developer, but the developer then is moving forward and so forth. Is that a model that UMass has a history of working with, has an aspiration to work with?
Yep. Fieldstone is a public-private partnership. So the project that's on Mass Avenue and also the University Village is a public-private partnership. There are different, you know, each deal is a little bit different. With University Village, our residential life department is managing those apartments. With Fieldstone, it's an independent operator that is, that is managing it. So, so those apartments there are, are being managed by a company called Grace Star.
Jesse?
Just to follow up on that quickly, something that came up, I think our last meeting, is that Fieldstone rents are for the highest around in a big radius. So my real question is, in those arrangements, does UMass have any leverage on that side of things?
So the, the price per apartment was definitely a conversation throughout the entire process from the very, you know, the original drafting of the RFP to find a partner. And it's something that's very important to our trustees is really focusing on, you know, what are the costs to the students? So yes, that is, that has always been part of it. The development company did set, they set their own rates. They also, you know, Fieldstone, the construction started during COVID and, you know, the prices were just very expensive to build during COVID. So that is definitely impacting this. I do want to point out that those rents include a fully furnished apartment, all utilities included. The students don't pay for anything else. So it, it is, you know, the, the numbers I understand, they look very big, but they also include a lot of amenities. So a comparison to other places, you've got to look at what's included and, you know, what are the students paying extra for?
Just quickly, yeah, I, I get that. What I'm thinking about really is a comparison to other off-campus housing. And that's way more, I think, than a lot of students will find in a single-family house down the road on Lincoln. And, and that's the real issue is that, that those beds don't alleviate pressure on those houses or the need for more conversions or the profitability of more conversions. And so that's really what I'm thinking about. If part of the conversation with private, public partnerships can be, oh, we need to keep the rents similar to what else is in town. Obviously, that's a pipe dream, right? No developer's going to do that. But if that could be the goal, that would actually help some of the problem.
I, I think the only thing that we can add to that, Jesse, is that I, I, you know, I think that any future development, that consideration certainly is going to be, you know, high on the list. So, you know, I, I could just leave it at that.
Yeah, I, I heard that it's only fifty percent occupied. Is that kind of true? I mean, so really the, the crux of the problem is that if the rents go up so much, it's going to invite investors to buy the single-family houses in Amherst and turn them into student rentals because their profit will be very high. And that means that no family can compete. And yes, we are a lot like the other flagship universities, but we only can compare ourselves to flagship universities in small towns that are as fragile as Amherst. And that's why we want to work together with you and create situations where we can find places for the houses, for the housing, the students, but save our town from going the way it is actually in actuality now going. Sunset Avenue, I live in the middle of town, one house after another is sort of turning into a rental. And, you know, the more that happens, the more it's going to escalate. It's not to the advantage of the university to have that happen or of, of any of us. So that's why we have to work together to figure out how we're going to take care of that gap.
And I, I just want to say we agree as, as far as the, the occupancy of Fieldstone. That has a lot to do with the completion date of the construction, which was still ongoing because of materials shortages, even as students were moving in, right? So it was, it was able to be occupied, but there was still some work to be done. We expect that to be fully occupied next year, but the prices are, are high and, and, and your point still remains. And I think it's something on everyone's mind. So thank you for that.
Pam, can you bring Elizabeth Breiling? Elizabeth, we're going to try and get you into the room here.
Hi. Yes, Elizabeth Breiling, thirty-six Cottage Street. Thank you for having this discussion. One thing I wondered about, and I'm sorry I missed the first part of the meeting, and that is whether or not the university is continuing to plan increase in enrollment. Just to point out that even as few as fifty more students is, you know, twelve plus for new four-bedroom apartments. And then I also wondered if the university could in some way help more in monitoring the off-campus housing stock that is occupied by students because all of this burden of the cost of monitoring, of permitting, of, you know, there are discussions about how this should happen, how we should monitor stock so that it's up to code, so that it's well-maintained. And all of this falls on the town budget. And I feel that the university needs to take a lot more responsibility, not just for the students they house on campus, but for the students they're expecting us to house for them, for the towns to house for them. Because all of the cost falls on the town. I don't know if this is something that needs to be worked through state funding or some other recognition. But I just feel that I don't see the university taking real responsibility for the fact that they are expecting the towns to just absorb the students. Thank you.
So Elizabeth, hi. Just a couple of quick things. We, we have broken down numbers again, and, you know, that, that we provided to the planning board. I, I won't go into those enrollment numbers again, and hopefully I think this will be replayed on Amherst Media at some point. So you'll be able to see that. But the, the question about our off-campus students, one of the things that I just want to mention that we have added to the strategic partnership agreement in this last year is money for the next four years, starting with this fiscal year for support of the Safe and Healthy Neighbors, Neighborhood Program. So that goes to either, you know, support the work of inspectors or, you know, the, the work that they do in terms of monitoring the permitting process, et cetera. So we have been very involved and we are very involved on a regular basis with our town partners. There are jurisdictional issues, but we often cross them in trying to find solutions. And, you know, I, I can, happy to talk at another time with you and you can reach out to Nancy or me over in, in Community Relations and, and we can give you a breakdown of what's going on. And we're actually, you know, really quite happy to do that at any time. Just don't want to take up the time of the, the planning board. Seems like it's a little bit out of the scope of that, but.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Elizabeth. Where at the point of stopping is to either any of the, the three of you in the room. I'm not seeing any hands. So at this point, I think I'll thank both of you very much for coming. And we hope we'll see more of you or at least can talk to you.
Yep. We're, we're always happy to come back.
Being able to get through to you on the phone or by email with specific questions would be helpful. I think certainly I'm feeling that personally.
I would just say call Nancy all the time.
Okay. I think I'm passing this now back to Doug.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Tony. All right. So the time is seven oh four and we can go on to the next item on our agenda, which was, is University Drive Potential Housing Overlay Zone. Presentation and discussion about concept for an overlay zoning district to allow more housing with a mix of apartment buildings and mixed-use buildings, along with just ideas for streetscape design. So Nate or Chris, do either of you want to introduce the topic? So Chris is saying that Nate will introduce and he has some handouts, which he appears to be handing out here. And okay, thank you, Nate.
Yeah, the first few pages are repetitive and deal, you know, I was in the packet, the last few pages, there's some with red font. And then there's a second page. And so, right, so, you know, we had presented the idea of having an overlay on University Drive for denser housing. So there's a, there's a sheet with bullet points. It's dated October nineteenth and then revised the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Yep. And so we could walk through that. And so, you know, I think the idea was to allow, you know, an overlay zone to have flexibility for a different, for denser housing. So, you know, what we have here in this bolded list is things that staff came up with, you know, allowing mixed-use buildings and apartments, but, you know, not capping the number of units in apartment buildings. You know, in, in this overlay, having mixed-use buildings only required on the corners of streets. And, you know, capping the non-residential space at twenty percent, not thirty percent what it is in the BG in downtown. You know, we, you know, going down there, there is a sidewalk and there's a, a tree belt along the road and we'd like to keep that. And to do that, we need at least a twelve-foot setback. So there's an access drive on the west side of University Drive. There's, and, you know, honestly, if we allow buildings to go right up to the setback, it would actually, most of those trees would have to be taken down because the property line is on the backside of the curb.
Yes.
Janet?
Yep.
I forgot that we're at, um, do you want to keep that access drive? I couldn't tell from the drawing.
Well, no, it's, well, what's interesting is the property line, if, if you, on the west side of University Drive, the properties are right on the backside of the, of the tree island. And so I, I, you know, the sidewalk is about two or three feet. It's right near the road and it's crumbling. I, the proposal would be to get rid of the sidewalk that's there now.
On the west side.
On the west side. It's, you know, it's not functional. And actually what we're, you know, half of the access drive would become a pedestrian way. Have it be a twelve-foot wide pedestrian way north to south, all the way from, you know, Route Nine all the way up to Amity. And so, and so in essence, it stays, but it, it's function changes. And, you know, and then we'd have to allow more curb cuts on University Drive to access development. And so, you know, the idea would be you try to take the cars off of it, but it becomes a pedestrian way. And so, you know, right now it's eighteen feet, twenty feet wide. You know, we're saying reduce the width, but essentially keep it there. Have something there for pedestrians and, you know, you'd have to establish crosswalks in certain locations. You know, four-story buildings, a maximum height of fifty-one feet, there'd be no footnote, footnotes or waivers in the overlay. We try to just accommodate everything with, you know, dimensional standards, maybe some design standards and guidelines. A few years ago, we looked at having a BL overlay where we had some design standards for buildings, you know, setbacks and facades, setbacks if it's so long. And, you know, those are the types of things we would incorporate as we move this along. But, you know, the, the, the bullets here are really things that could be incorporated as standards and conditions in the overlay. So, you know, all utilities need to be screened from view. And we're not prescribing how. If they're on the roof, you know, you have to design a parapet or a truss system so they're not visible. You know, the design review principles would be applied. You know, law coverage would be ninety percent, you know, so that's something different. So essentially, we're not, we're combining elements of what would be part of the BG and BBC and, you know, putting it in this overlay. So right now, there's a few different zones that it covers, base zones, and this would be an overlay that would be voluntary to use. And so, you know, the second packet that's in this handout is newer development around New England. And it's, you know, taken most of it from Google, Google Street View. You know, there's Stores, Connecticut, there's Providence, there's Worcester. And so really this is, to have the planning board look at this and, and consider, you know, are there elements here that we'd like to see as part of design standards? You know, are there things here that we don't, that we don't actually really like the look of? And so I want to be realistic and say that, you know, we could take pictures of historic downtown Portland, Maine or Amherst, but we're not going to get the Hastings Building again. You know, it's just not, it's not going to happen. So for instance, on the second page, we have Northampton, Mass. It's the two new buildings, the first ones, Live One Fifty-Five and then the Lumber Yard. And so, you know, the, the top building has, it's, it's difficult to see. You can see it in the recessed part. There is some step back in the facade. So there's some relief around windows. They have a flat roof with some detailing along the roof line. You know, they have storefronts along the street with some awnings. You know, and so is that, are the, you know, are there elements there we could draw on? You know, Portland, Maine has seen a lot of building in the last few years. And so the next few pages are newer developments in Portland. And, you know, some are in districts where they hadn't had a lot of height. Most of the buildings are three and four stories. The second page in Portland is closer to downtown. One is right downtown. It's an all-glass building, you know, right near historic brick buildings. And so again, it's just, you know, what, what are we envisioning for University Drive? And so, you know, what staff is thinking about with the overlay is that mixed use on the corners and then we could have infill with apartments. So right now apartments are capped at twenty-four units a building. In the overlay, we wouldn't have a cap. You could do an eighty-unit apartment building. You know, that it's really what are the site constraints down there? There's parking, there's wetlands. So what, what could a site handle? We're proposing at least a half-space-per-unit ratio of parking. You know, that's something to consider is that, do we want one parking space at least per unit? That would really limit the density we get just because of, you know, lot size and everything else. And do we want everything to be paved? Is this a location where it is okay to have fewer parking spaces because of proximity to, you know, bus transit, UMass and Route Nine and other things? You know, so what the list is. You know, so what the list is, what, you know, there's a a few notes on the back of the of the bolded list. You know, you know, we wouldn't have new classifications of housing. You know, we could, you'd fit it into the use residential use classifications we have now, a mixed use building or apartment. A question is, do does inclusionary zoning apply? Do we require affordable units down there? We could have it be an opt out. Maybe we have a payment in lieu of that's different than what we require now. And so you know, that's, you know, that that's kind of the basis of this. And so, you know, I seem to, at the previous meeting, most of the planning board members were enthusiastic about looking at University Drive and we're we're developing some site concepts, but it's really using what's in the bullet list here. So, you know, a 12 foot setback along the streets. Four stories. You know, mixed uses only on the corner and, you know, what what really would a a site look like? So if you take you know, where the ROTC building is and the bicycle exchange. You know, and say someone, the property rights.
The National Guard.
The National Guard. What what could happen there? Is it 80 units? Is it, you know, in 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 units is it is different, you know, so a few years ago, it was three and four bedroom units were being built and now it's studios and ones. Right? And I think the average size of a unit has shrunk. So you know, what we're seeing is probably an average size unit might be five or 600 square feet. Because it's mostly studios, ones and a few in some twos. There's not a lot of three bedrooms. Do we have a requirement that there has to be a certain percentage of three bedrooms in the overlay if they do something? I mean, you know, buildings over 50 units maybe have to have a certain percentage of three bedrooms. And so those, these are the kinds of things that we could put in the overlay. The idea would be a site plan review. So it'd still be, there'd be a review process. You know, and it and it's just kind of building on, you know, if we want to see redevelopment there, how can we incentivize it through zoning? Because right now it really isn't. The zoning doesn't allow for much. And so someone could come in and do maybe a few units with more parking, but it's like, is that a missed opportunity if this is the location for denser housing to allow it with an overlay?
Karen.
Yeah, I'm, this is so exciting. I I like your ideas. I especially like the idea not to require so much parking there because my my hope is that this would really develop into a bicycle friendly corridor to the university. And this this Wolfert Street for Living. I also like that. I've experienced that in Berlin. It's a really safe way to bicycle and people can be out there. I think the most important thing is to get the setback as as much as possible. And they've already done such a beautiful job with planting those trees. It's already a lot prettier than a lot of the pictures that you see that have no green between the a house and, you know, the street. And think of yourself as somebody that wants to spend time there. It's only inviting if there is a big setback. If there are places to maybe sit in the front, if there's safe bicycling, not some bicycle thing that's crossed off on the road, but really it should either share the sidewalk or it should be something complete of because I picture this as the place to live and to bicycle everywhere. It's has easy access to the bicycle thing. But so many of your ideas, I think, are wonderful and exciting, really.
They just quickly, yeah, I I wasn't envisioning changing the the roadway. So it's a really wide right of way. It's 100 feet. But on the west side, you know, it's about 12 to 18 feet from curb to back of, you know, to the to the drive aisle. And so, you know, really, I don't think that's wide enough to you know, so right now with if we have a 12 foot setback and then the buildings are, you know, right on the setback line, it's anywhere from 25 to 30 feet from the edge of road, from the curb. And so it's set back quite a bit from the street. And so even a four story building. You know, it's not that close to the street. So I'm still envisioning University Drive would be relatively narrow. With, you know, as narrow shoulders and there's no bike lanes on the road. It would be off off road bike lanes and sidewalks. And so you know, as opposed to like what happened on Route nine, where you have a travel lane, a shoulder, a bike lane, and the pavement itself is really wide. The University Drive would stay a narrow pavement and everything would be, you know, off.
Jesse?
Yeah, I'm also pretty excited by most of this. A couple really questions out of ignorance. One is is currently it's a ton of green or space there. And I'm wondering what are the zoning tools to plan in a park or two green spaces? So it doesn't become just a wall. You know, solid developed area because then it just makes it that much more attractive to live. And just, I think, better overall. I don't know what those tools are. If if we need to designate upfront, here's a park, here's going to be parked, here's going to be parked, whatever. You you probably have answers for that. The second question is also about the mixed use or commercial space. You said just on the corners as a requirement. What what do you mean by corners? Do you mean with each developed building? Or do you mean are there going to be curb cuts and that's what you're calling corners? And and follow up on the commercial space? How do we incentivize that as a priority also? Because to be frank, I have not been impressed with what's happened in town with the commercial space in terms of adding to our town. Felt like it really added very little from the new buildings. And I'd hate to see that happen here. It's such a great opportunity. Tons of smaller stores, cafes, whatever.
Yeah, so I think the mixed use question is a really good one. You know, so what we've heard from developers is right now we require 30%. There's no waiving of that. So you have to be at least 30% and in in any part of town where you do a mixed use building, whether it's downtown or in village centers, you know, East Amherst, wherever you can do it. And oftentimes they find that that's an impediment. That they actually, you know, they they'll build a building knowing that the residential units will subsidize the non residential space for, you know, for years even until they can find a tenant. And so you know, some of it would be if we require 30% on every building that's built down here, we're going to have a lot of empty space. And so the requirement was, say, only on the corners, Amity and Route nine. It's not that you couldn't build a mixed use building anywhere else. We're just requiring it that on certain locations, and it could be mid block too. Maybe there's, we have a distance that every so many feet is required that you have a mixed use building. But right now, the reason why people build mixed use buildings is there's no cap on number of units, right? So in an apartment building, it's 24. So they build a mixed use building so you can put in whatever, 50, 100 units. You know, we think that here it could be okay to have apartments on the ground floor. And it doesn't have to be, you know, mixed used along the whole stretch. And so, but I do think that's a really good consideration. You know, is is there a distance requirement where we'd want to see a certain amount of retail? Or non residential space as we're calling it. And so you know, that's something that, you know, or do we have a requirement that there be a minimum and as, you know, in every building, but maybe it could be waived and we have to, what are those requirements to have it be waived? Like something more strict than like, oh, I can't fill it. You know, give us a reason. You know, show us a pro, but you know, pro forma, a budget pro forma, whatever it is, we could, you know, have some standards there. In terms of open space. Sometimes we do it by property and then, you know, or we could again, as an overlay, do we designate some places where we'd want to have, you know, community open space? It doesn't make sense for every development to have his own little dog park or whatever, if we could have something else. And so again, what's nice about an overlay is it's flexible in that respect. And so maybe we could consider how do we, how do we have standards and conditions for that too?
Janet?
So I was, I thought this was really interesting and I I did have a question about green spaces for people. I just pictured this wall of kind of dull apartment buildings and everybody, you know, getting on a bus or walking somewhere. I just I just thought it it doesn't really fit the fabric of Amherst and think about where it could be green, although I do appreciate the the line of trees. I also am somewhat, I'm somewhat afraid of the Dutch concept having tried to walk around it and constantly being like knocked over or jumping out of the way of really fast bicycles, usually like parents with kids in the back. So I would like to see some sidewalks, maybe that people can just walk on. I also had the idea of taking the access road and just covering it and making it kind of a covered walkway. And it could be, you know, a place that, you know, kind of a thorns marketplace, like an outdoor indoor marketplace. And then, you know, I just started to riff on all sorts of ideas. I think what we're trying to do here is probably what we're trying to, hopefully trying to do in other parts of town is to create a community. And, you know, and so I've talked to people who live in the PRP, the apartments that are in the research part. And they have a terrible time getting across, they can't go across the street. It's too dangerous. They have to get in their car to go to Stop and Shop or the big Y. And the Stop and Shop is part of this kind of University Drive Village Center. And so I thought, to me, it was like, let's, instead of doing an overlay district, why not we just do some University Drive Village Center planning and you know, involve the arbers and the people who live near there and the people who own properties. And and the people, all the people across the Route nine in the apartment complexes and just say, you know, what do you want this to look like? And then when we have a vision of what we want there, we change the zoning to make that happen. And so I think this is a great start to sort of a larger vision. I mean, there's people who live in, is it Amity Place, the place that you live, Doug? You know, they, I'm sure they have ideas of what, you know, and the people, you know, about what they'd like to see happen in there and make things more walkable for them. So I would I always thought this is a really exciting beginning. And I've actually talked to people who live in the apartments and they really want that whole area to be kind of, become more alive and better.
Bruce?
I agree. I read this a couple of times in the course of the day. Trying to think, well, what would I change or what would I suggest? How can I be clever? And and I couldn't. I just kept reading it and I thought, this is interesting. This is actually exciting. And the only thing that struck me in the course of the conversation the past few minutes is that maybe there's some things in here that we could create as discretionary because I I personally rather like, and I think when I was interviewed for this position, I said so that I rather like empowering planning boards with discretionary powers. Now, I imagine there's downsides to that. I mean, it's probably giving a board, I'm guessing discretionary powers means more work for the staff because they have to advise and counsel. I'm guessing that that's a thing that planning staffs might not ideally want to do. I may be wrong. So the question is would there be, and I think I highlighted on this idea of or this, the 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 piece related to concentration of or provision of of non residential space on on the first floors. And should it be 100%, should it be 30%, should it be a corner? Should it be this? Should it be that? Indicates that we don't really know. It's it's a thing we're learning about and it struck me that that might be a good candidate for a discretionary capability or discretionary power of the board. And I thought in something is 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 wonderfully nuanced is all of this, that there might be placed for one or two discretionary capability or requirements of the board, rather than trying to guess the right number or the right percentage or the right whatever.
Do you want to respond to that? I I have comments too.
Yeah, I mean, I I think, you know, Bruce, those are good points. I, you know, right now, I think my thought would be if we didn't require mixed use buildings, at some point, they just wouldn't be built if we changed apartments to have no cap on the number of units, because the housing market is so strong that a developer would just keep building apartments. They wouldn't build a mixed use building. And so perhaps we require it in certain locations, whether it's a distance or wherever, but then the percentage is discretionary, right? So I maybe it's a little bit of both. I agree. I think it's hard to have a firm number, even like what percent of open space, for instance, on a project when there could be so many psych constraints that a lot of it's green anyways because it's wetland or it's stormwater management, right? And so it might not, it's not going to become a big block of building if, you know, most of the, say, between properties is wet. And so I think but yeah, I I think there could be an opportunity to do that, to, you know, to have something that's required, but we're not prescribing it in a way that you know, it's a finite number. It's something that the board can then work with the an applicant on.
Jesse?
Maybe it's totally unavoidable, but something else my family talks about is, you know, what we lost in the carriage shops that didn't come back in terms of commercial spaces. The the the, I mean, the stores that were there that did not come back to town. Right? And so I'm thinking about this, you know, there's only a handful of smaller businesses that are there. Is there anything we can build in for them also? As planning, I just don't know.
Did you want to respond or?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a, that's a tough one. I think in the carriage shops, I think the you know, the owner had kept the rents low, right? So there was, it was affordable for those businesses. You know, once there's new development and there's costs, you know, that someone would say, well, it, we don't the construction costs justify a different rent. And so you know, I I'm not sure, you know, there's probably some programs or, you know, there's, there are probably ways to deal with it, but I think it's hard to require it. I think the idea would be how do we incentivize it? How can we incentivize small spaces? How can we incentivize smaller rents? And some of it would be, I'd say, well, allow more residential units to subsidize the non residential space.
So so I had a couple of reactions to this. First of all, my sort of dream had been that you had storefronts along the whole University Drive frontage. So, you know, limited mixed use. You know, those places where the apartments come right to the ground. Are they going to kill the street? So I didn't know that. I actually had hoped we could just, we could, we could ask for a larger percentage of commercial so that, you know, the CVS is which is there now moved into the first floor of you know, some building with residences on top of it. I was surprised by the four stories and not five, because we've obviously got experience now both downtown and at the university with five story residential with with mixed, which might be a way to incentivize, you know, you can get to do five stories if you build the first floor as commercial. Because that that'd be net the same amount of apartments. So that that was another reaction. I was glad to see you, you you thought a little bit more about parking because that hadn't been in the first draft that we got. And you know, I don't know if half a space is right, but there's no doubt that even if you Monday through Friday, ride your bike to work on the weekends, you probably want a car and you're either going to rent it or you're going to garage it somewhere. Now, maybe, maybe the, you know, maybe that sets up an incentive for somebody to build a separate garage. And then the other thing. Yeah, I guess I wanted to, I wanted to ask you, could you clarify? Because I'm actually a little unclear on where you're saying the property line is. Is the property line on one of the curbs of the drive aisle? Or is it on the curb of University Drive?
Right, so no, the right of way ends 12 feet off the, you know, the curb on the road. So it, where the red maples are, there's a if you're looking south on University Drive, there's a like a three foot sidewalk and there's a line of red maples. And then there's the access drive. Yep, that first curb of the access drive is the property line.
Okay, so the eastern curb of the
Yep.
access drive. Okay, great. Yeah, I guess that's all I can think of at the moment.
Yeah, I mean, I think Doug, your idea of allowing five stories, but having requiring mixed use is something that would be, is worth considering. And so I think, you know, the the whatever percent we could come up with is a minimum. Anyone can always do more, right? So even in our mixed use buildings now, someone could fill the whole first floor with a tenant. And so we're not you know, the difficulty is when we're saying if it's a 30% minimum now in the BG, that seems like it's fine. But in BBC and a lot of village centers, we're hearing from developers saying, we we actually have a hard time getting 30%. Same thing with parking. There are some developers who want one space for every unit, right? They will want, no matter what the requirement is. If it's less, they'll always want to have at least one space per unit. Some might say, great. If I can do less, I'll do less. But there's probably some who want to at least have one space for every unit just for their tenants. And so again, that's going to drive the site design, right? So someone might want you know, if you could do a half space, maybe you could get 100 units on a property, but the developers like actually want to do one space per unit and I'm going to get 50, 50 units. And he you know, changes the the formula for that, for that design.
Okay, I think Janet, you were next, and then Karen.
So when we were changing the zoning on the parking requirements and mixed use buildings downtown, kind of a very busy summer, 30% was the lowest amount of commercial space of the towns we studied. So everything, everybody else was like 50, 80%. And if we're going to increase the density, the of, you know, if we go up to four story And if we're going to increase the density of, you know, if we go up to four stories, every, every one of those properties becomes more valuable. So there's, they have an increase in property value. And so if we're going to five stories, much more valuable. If we decide we don't have to do, we do less on the first floor for mixed use or lift the cap on apartment buildings. You know, it's, it's much, much more valuable. And I think what as a, as a board and as a town, we, asking for 30% commercial space is the, is the least of all the towns that we studied. And so I think that we need to make sure that if we're sort of giving an increase in value, we're encouraging development, that it's what we want. And so if you want to say you have to have a whole bunch of space for small shops, like the carriage shops, you'll always find those filled up over time, you know? Look at, you know, Potline Village is filled with small shops, you know, Route nine is filled with small shops. East Amherst is filled with small shops. It's the big, you know, the places down in Amherst Center that did not fill up are one really big expensive space. And, you know, I, I, so I, I think that we can, we can put in requirements. If we're giving something and increasing the value and the profitability, the future profitability, we should say, yeah, we want green space and green space isn't just a wetland, because you can't walk into a wetland. You can't walk into, um, you know, what the stormwater, you know, drain system. And so, you know, you'd say, yeah, we want to park. We want someplace where kids want to play or people can just sit. And so I think we can, but I think this is planning. I think this is what do we want to see there? What kind of housing? I would suggest that if we go to four stories, that they be peeked through. So it sort of fits in with the character and not just look like Stories Connecticut, which is kind of unappealing. So I, I think that we have to do a planning process and decide what we want to, what we want to see. But it's not you and me. I think it's the, the community. And I really do think we have to go into a formal planning process. And I don't know if we can do it as a board or delegate it to a task force, but we have to talk to the community and we have to say, this is what we want to see. And, um, and then if we're going to give, increase the value of properties and future development values, money, profitability, we know there's some very deep pockets who want to come to Amherst and we can ask them for something, what we want, what we want to see. I think we just have to do that.
Karen?
Yeah, I, I do agree. A lot of people have a lot of good ideas. I was just walking through downtown with my friend from Germany. And I said, you know, all these parking places, why is it we have all these pedestrian places in Germany? And she said, it's because we have garages. We build parking underground. She said, why don't these big apartments have underground garages? And on university, we could say, for example, we want to keep, or we could try to put it out there with the community that one option would be that this would be a place where you could have a big parking garage. And the benefit is you have, you, you don't pave over all this land and you have that green space that we need. Yeah.
So I actually kind of disagree with a couple of the comments. I'll just put that out there. I'm really surprised to be talking about green space in that area, because I don't really think of it as potentially being a family area. I think of it as being students and young professionals who, uh, you know, have just moved to town. This is their first apartment and they want to be really close to the work or downtown and walk to the supermarket. So, um, and I realize that that group might want to have a park, but they can also go up the hill to Kendrick Park. And then, I, I'm, I'm not convinced that we need a lengthy, broad public process. You know, I think we have enough expertise at the table and with the staff to put forward some ideas about how the zoning should change. And that we are, we've been empowered to do that by town council, by having us appointed. And, you know, I mean, we can put a vision out there. If, if we, if, if we don't have a vision, then we don't really need to put anything out there. But it's clear Nate has some measure of vision, because he's put it down on paper. And, um, we have reactions to that. So I don't feel the need, partly because the people that are out in that community are busy building, living their own lives already. And they're not, you know, they're, they're not really thinking about what could be across the street. So there may be a few things you get out of that, but I, you know, we can easily put a vision to town council. And, and then that might draw us people of the public, including people in the community to make comments. And then maybe it changes.
Yeah. I mean, I think the, you know, um, I think the purpose of the overlay is something to consider. So, you know, originally when we spoke about this the other week, I said, you know, students only. And Doug said, well, why couldn't it be someone else? And so, you know, we, it could be that this is just a student housing overlay. And, you know, we can be more restrictive about who lives there. Or we say it's just an overlay and it could be whatever the market demands. And I think the market will probably be mostly students. But, um, so I think, but the purpose of it is important. So, you know, what are we looking at here? Is it, um, you know, are we trying to densify it and say, you know, my goal, I said, I think was like, I'd love to see a thousand beds down here in the overlay. And maybe we start to change the housing equation a little bit. You know, it, it's going to take a magnitude of, you know, that to do something. It's not going to be, you know, a, a 20 units here, a converted dwelling here or something. It's going to be, you know, something much bigger. And, you know, hearing Tony and Nancy tonight, I kind of agree that probably students are moving to Amherst or they want, the proximity to UMass is important now, probably more than ever. And so, you know, I, as a regional, uh, housing is a regional issue. But I think if, if, if we had 5,000 more beds and there was 5,000 students living in 20 minutes away from UMass or half an hour, they're all going to come and live closer, because that's just makes more sense. I think, you know, so I think it's a really hard problem to solve. But, you know, I think if we densify East Amherst and we allow East Amherst to be bigger and denser, it's going to be mostly students. And so it's really hard, zoning can allow for things. It's really hard to, to regulate the end user. And so, you know, we try to get creative with inclusionary zoning or doing certain things, but the market will kind of bear that. And so we can try to make it look nice. Maybe we try to incentivize things with, you know, you can say, we have to have a percent of three bedrooms. You know, what, what do we, what can we do to try to get to the group, the end user we want? But I think it's really difficult through zoning. So even to the point of like, what kind of commercial space do we want? You know, we could say a percentage, maybe we want so many, so much glazing on the storefront or doors every so often. But that doesn't mean it's not going to be one big space with five doors. You know, even if we're thinking it's going to be five individual spaces, it's really hard to get into the interior layout of, of it. And so, um, I mean, I think there are all things to consider. I, I mean, it's like, right. It'd be sad to think we're going to have, you know, a lot of new buildings here and have a lot of vacant real, you know, non-residential space, retail space, commercial space. At the same time, I'd say if we had that, we'd probably have a lot more square footage than we have now. If this gets built out and we have 50% of every new building is new non-residential space, it's probably more space than we have now. That's there. I mean, so it's just, how do we even fill that?
Go ahead, Janet.
Point is me, I think if it was a student housing district, it would be a different, to me, I, I think it's like, what do we want to see there? And so the idea is, okay, it's a student housing district. And what do students want? What would meet their needs? You know, we're just looking for beds that UMass isn't providing, or maybe UMass decides to put, continue the beds on the other side. Like, I'm fine with that. Um, I'm not fine with not telling anybody in the area about it. And I'm happy to go and knock on the arbor's door and to say, we're thinking about adding a thousand beds in here. What do you think? I mean, you know, I, I will just wind up doing that because it's my personality. But I think it'd be a nice gesture for the planning board to speak to the community. I think this is just a normal planning process I see in every other community. So I hope it's not a shocking suggestion. I think it is more interesting as a student housing district. I was on one of those international university housing crisis. I don't know. I can never remember the name. And there was this Canadian city that had three colleges and universities in a triangle. And they just decided to just zone the hell out of the middle and make it a student housing area. They went to like 14 stories or they built 14,000 units. And prices went way up and the vacancy rate was really low and it didn't solve the rental problem in the area. And so, you know, so I think, you know, and the way I look at this whole process, I keep on thinking about a three-legged stool. We build more student housing, we built increased density in the village centers, hopefully more mixed housing. The university builds more housing and then we have to put some controls in to protect the neighborhoods. The mix of too many students in the neighborhood is very negative and we had to figure out some way to regulate that and make it more of a mixed experience, more integrated. So I'm totally in favor of making University Drive a student housing district. It does change the way I look at it instead of thinking about it as a village center. But I think we have to be clear about our goals and we have to consult the people who live around there.
Jess?
Thanks. Um, I was just going to add, I guess, perspective sort of halfway. When I was thinking about green spaces or a park and smaller commercial spaces, I'm also thinking selfishly. Yes, I think it's a great place to try and convince lots of more student housing and that's what developers will build. But I'm guessing I'm not the only one who goes down there three times a week. And I want to keep doing that. And I'd like that, oh, there's a new sandwich shop. I'm going to go get a sandwich and then go sit in the park and eat it. Like, I want that to be an interactive place, maybe not as much as a town center that we're designing. But if we don't put that opportunity there, it definitely won't happen. If we say, okay, no commercial space needed for the majority of that stretch, it won't happen because of what you just pointed out. They're just going to build beds, because that's what's most profitable right now. I do think we should structure that in as best we can. Make it an attractive addition for people who live here, not just students.
Yeah. I've said this before at planning board meetings. I for one am alarmed at the disproportionate reliance of Amherst on residential occupancy in its tax base. And, uh, so I, I look at this, yeah, it's a, it's a great opportunity for adding student beds. I, I get that, but I don't want to lose sight of the opportunities presented here for commercial space, especially on the first floor. And anything that we can do, it'll be marginal, but if we can do anything, that will pay enormous dividends in terms of the financial stability of the town.
Okay. Chris, I see your hand. We're getting to the point where I'm wondering if we're going to be able to wrap up soon or not. Go ahead, Chris.
That's what I wanted to address. We had a tentative date of November 29th for a fourth in-person meeting to talk about housing. I wonder if you want to consider that as a means for continuing this conversation? And we have plans to go back and come up with some plans to show you how buildings, how big buildings might be, both in two dimensions and possibly in three dimensions, if we can get around to it. But would you consider having another meeting on November 29th to continue this conversation?
So is that the Wednesday after Thanksgiving?
Yeah. And I think, you know, the images of the buildings, I'm, I'm not sure that was in the packet. If not, I mean, I think, you know, you can always email Chris or myself with comments. And so that was, they're really in here to, for that, to start a conversation, you know, what are, you know? I mean, honestly, I put stores in because often people say they don't like it. I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, they're tall buildings, they're big buildings. Is that, do we like five or six stories? I mean, I, you know, I don't want to play, show my hand, but right, it's like, you know, we can't show everything that we think is nice. So, but, so anyways, yeah, go through the, the packet. And if there's things that you, you like or you think are missing, um, you know, that's, those are, can be part of the, you know, discussion. I will say, um, on a different topic, we have, you know, the request for proposals for downtown design standards is out there to seek a consultant. And the proposals are due at the end of the month. And so, you know, the hope would be that by the end of the year, we have someone on board who is starting a process to look at, you know, downtown design standards. And I think that, you know, what we come up with through that could be adapted for here. And it, you know, may, the timing may not overlap, but I think, you know, we could get pretty quickly a sense for what they're looking at in terms of design standards for downtown.
All right. Janet?
I think Jesse brought this up at the last meeting about talking about, you know, the ways to protect neighborhoods. And I think maybe the 30th, we can do half of it, talking about this and the other half about the different mechanisms in terms of making sure that neighborhoods just don't flip. And I, I get a daily email from Northampton Realtor and Amherst Realtor. And every week it's like investors take note in Amherst, but it, they don't say that in Northampton, even when they're two family houses. And so, you know, they're pointing out at the occupancy and, you know, everything. So I think that, um, we need to talk about that. And I think we have to come up with some very firm recommendations.
Okay. Jesse?
Yeah, I was going to bring that up as well. And if we have a date for that discussion, I'm trying to assemble some of the rental data by neighborhood for us to talk about too. So if yes, that's the date, I'll make sure I have something ready to share with the group.
Well, we don't have much of an agenda yet put together, so we can put that on the list. Karen?
So we can, we can email you some of our wild ideas and our imagination of what, like I, I can picture this whole thing being geothermal. Doing the whole street geothermal, having really wide sidewalks, keeping those beautiful trees that are having, having green space along between the street and the sidewalks. That's aesthetically so much more inviting than the pictures you showed, which don't have that at all. It's all cement. There are few spindly trees there that aren't very big yet. But I think it can be done better. And one cautionary thing is we just can't have it look anything like King Street in Northampton.
So yeah, I just, yeah, no, great. I'd, I'd welcome the comments. Yeah. I mean, one thing is interesting, you know, we're, most of the building. And so, you know, we're getting a lot of utilities, right? A lot of compressors, a compressor for every unit. And so that's something that we hadn't considered a few years ago. But I think, you know, moving forward, right? What is the utility? You know, what is that? Where, where are they? What does it look like? So I know you said geothermal, but I think, you know, solar heat compressors, heat pumps, what, you know, where does it go? I think that's really important. So, you know, if you have a, an 80-unit apartment building, where do you have 80 compressors? You know, are they, is it on a wall? Or do you have 80 meter, 80 electric meters? You know, is, can we screen that from view? How does that work? And so.
All right. So our time is 7:49. Maybe we'll go ahead and go to our next item on the agenda. Fred? You're on. This is a discussion of owner occupancy and subdivisible dwellings. Presentation by Fred Hartwell and discussion of the benefits of owner occupancy and subdivitable dwellings.
Thank you. You should all have, and it should also be available on screen, a redacted copy of an actual tax return. Before I get into that, I want to talk a little bit about owner occupancy on, on multifamily. The, yeah, this was, this was part of the packet. And it's also, it's also been arranged to, so that it can be projected as part of this meeting. Before I get into that, just in general about owner occupancy, the, uh, the, the rental picture changes significantly with owner occupancy. My wife has a saying that I very much agree with in that is you pay or you pay. And, uh, but I've found after 51 years in this business is that it pays and we choose to pay, it definitely pays to rent below the market. Often significantly below. And, uh, it means that we increase the quality of tenant. And that's a business decision that we choose to make. And that is something that often happens in an owner occupied one or two family, or three family, either one. Because you're, you're creating a neighbor. you're creating a neighbor. And just naturally, there's gonna be a calculation that goes into that that is different if from a, this, the same number of units managed by a corporation somewhere. It's just natural. And we also know that the incidence of noise complaints are almost vanishingly rare from owner occupied apartments as opposed to ones that are not. So there is a, an enormous benefit to encouraging owner occupied rentals. And I, I think people are generally aware of this. And I think they are generally aware that there's something to be gained in terms of having rental income. But what I've found is that most people don't understand that not only is their income, but it is enormously tax advantaged. And so I thought I would go through. And as I said, we, we have these, it's, it's redacted, but this is a, a Schedule E. This is the same form that I've been filling out as part of tax returns for 51 years. This is, this is Schedule E. It's Schedule E 51 years ago and it's still Schedule E today. And if you look at column A, that is a three-family owner occupied. And you see 30,047. I can tell you that 30,000 is rent. 470 is the orders that go into the coin-operated laundry, which was put in again to increase the quality of tenant. Because of tenants that you want, we found tend to be people who would prefer to do laundry on premise somewhere and not have to drive to a laundromat. So again, this is a business decision. But 30,000 in rent. And then you look at line seven, cleaning and maintenance. Oh, here's the way that works. This is a, this is a three-family. The owner occupied part of this is about 40% of the building. And the two apartments are about 60% of the building. The way IRS treats this, that means that for general maintenance activities, for example, mowing the lawn, 60% of that is deductible in effect, because it goes in this line. And anything that, that's on line seven is gonna come out of the, the, the income. This is the way this works. Homeowner's insurance, 60% of that shows up here on line nine. The legal and professional fees, that's the rental registration fee. The repairs, that's when I, when I repair something in an apartment, that's 100%, because that, that has no general. Tax, property taxes. 6,215, that is 60% of the property taxes due to the town of Amherst. Now, I think probably all of you are aware that as of the 2017 tax changes, which are major, nobody is itemizing deductions anymore. Which means in effect, you lost the ability to write off property taxes. You got a higher standard deduction, but you don't write off property taxes. Well, 60% of these of these property taxes in this case are part of the business operation. So yes, there is a deduction here on line 16. And the, the, I'm gonna just mention something here. If you look at line utilities lining, that's 17, that's obvious. And again, in some cases, it, it depends if it's the owner's meter for the, that I deduct 100% of that. If it's the propane for the laundry, I deduct 100% of that and so forth. That, this is just, you know, and things change. I, I do everything defensively. I've been audited three times so far. The IRS is up a dollar and 14 cents. And they tend to leave me alone. But like, for example, when I have the gutters cleaned, well, I did a rough measurement and turns out that only about 30% of the gutters are over the rented part. And so I only did what goes into this equation is only 30% of the cost of the gutter clean. It's, everything here has to be defensible in an audit. And you'll notice that the, the depreciation here is, is zero. And we're gonna talk a little bit more about that. But so if you took at the rents and then you look at, you do deduct the expenses and you're down to 13,261. So that you know, 17,000 right there came off. And, and 13,000 appears to be taxable, but it's more complicated than that. If you go to the next handout, which is the, is a depreciation record, which goes back almost 30 years and and you'll notice I'm, if you look over here on, and this is just the North Whitney Street. This is you'll see the current depreciation is almost $8,000. Well, how does the depreciation get to be $8,000 when line 18 is zero? Well, line 18 is zero because depreciation is a passive loss. And there's a there's an IRS form which I did not set up, but I'll just show it to you. This is 8582. Passive losses have to get tested on this form before they become deductible. I will tell you they normally are. And so then how does this get reported? Well, the, the, this is, house is actually in a trust. And so the trust issues a K1. This is, a K1 is how you get these things reported. It's kind of like a W2 form, but it's for business. And you'll notice that the amount of in, in, in block seven here, you'll have, you'll see the that's where the income flows. And, and then in block nine, you see code A. And code A in block nine is depreciation. So if you take the depreciation, now this, and by the way, this number is, is one half of the total because my wife and I both receive a K1 and we are both equal beneficiaries of the trust. So as you can see, the the $30,000 number becomes a, a proxim, in our case, in combination with another property. This, this turns out to be closer to $1,000 in actual taxable income. And I have to say, you know, I, I got into this 51 years ago, not knowing exactly what would go forward, but I kind of had a conversation with myself about, you know, I don't know what I wanna do when I grow up. I was 25 years old when I had this conversation. I said, you know, I, I know I'm gonna figure out what I wanna do eventually. But I don't know what I wanna do right now, but I wanna be able to afford to do whatever the hell it is I decide that I wanna do. And I know that I, I'm pretty good with law and I know I'm really good with my hands and I think I can be a landlord. And that's when I, I bought this. And now 51 years on, there isn't a day that goes by that I don't look at this and I say, this is the best thing since sliced bread. I have, you know, I have a fixed income. I'm on a fixed income. And this is, this is a, you know, a five-figure rent and it's tax, and it's totally tax advantaged. I mean, how do you and, and I, I think people don't understand. And, 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 and I mean, particularly since the 2017 tax law changes that meant that we no longer could recover a lot of this stuff by itemizing deductions. We don't, we're not itemizing deductions anymore. Well, you know, that's, so this is, this is what I, I wanted to put this out because I don't think people understand just how incredibly powerful this model really is in terms of being advantageous to the people who do it. And you know, the, I wanna say a little bit more about subdivitable dwellings because the dwelling that we're in has, it's technically not a subdivitable dwelling be, because it was, didn't come out of the ground as such. Now, I'm the guy that invented subdivitable dwellings. I created that bylaw back in the 90s. And I wanted to, a, a, and that was the, the first time that the bylaw actually specified owner occupant. And so part of that warrant article was the creation of the definition of owner occupancy. That was part of the, the same warrant. I invented the whole thing back in the 90s. And, you know, this is, this is why I did it. And I, I thought, you know, it would be nice to have this come out of the ground. Well, it hasn't happened much. But my solution going forward on this is, is not to abandon subdivitable dwellings, but rather make that process available for existing housing stock. Because it has worked incredibly well. You know, I have four children that were born where I am now and they grew up. And when they grew up and got older, but before they left, they took up a lot more space. And so I, at one point, did not renew the leases in the rear townhouse apartment and put a door through on the second floor and a door through on the first floor. And that part all became single family. And I didn't have to move anywhere. I did, you know, I didn't have to pay a real estate commission. It, it became, you know, suitable for, you know, for family, for, for children. And then after a number of years, the children started to leave. I went back to the zoning board of appeals, got another special permit, recreated the, the townhouse apartment in the back, went back to being a three-family. Those doors are still framed. They're behind fire code sheet rock, but that's the, everything's framed. The electric is set up so that in about a half an hour, I can transfer the entire load in the, in that apartment back to the, the main house and then go back the other direction. And there's no reason why this has to be limited to something coming out of the ground. It could apply to this. Instead of being a special development method, it could apply to anything. And it is enormously useful. And again, it promotes owner occupancy, which has all sorts of other benefits to it. So I wanted to try and put that out there in a systematic way. And thank you for your time.
Fred, can we ask questions?
Oh, please do.
Okay, cuz I have, I, just to understand what you're you, you, you're using your primary example here. You had 30,000 in rent.
Yeah.
You had 17,000 in expenses that you wouldn't have had if you didn't own this larger dwelling.
Right.
So you netted 13,000 and that 13,000 is highly tax advantaged cuz it's only like a thousand dollars that's actually taxed.
Yeah, because the, I can, I can take depreciation out of it.
Right.
And
So that 13,000 is really your nest, you know, your golden goose is that big?
Well, yeah, but the, you know, the we make major capital improvement. We're constantly improving the property.
Okay.
Which means.
You did spend some money 30 years ago to.
Residential rental is, is a 27 and a half year straight line. So it's, that's, it's, it's not the most aggressive depreciation deduction out there. But again, if you look at the depreciation, you, you get a pretty good idea of, you know, it, it adds up over, over time. And, and then that is a gift that keeps on giving for 27 and a half years.
Okay. Great. Janet.
I too have experienced this miracle. So I, I, so I, we lived in a two-family house in Somerville and so, you know, 60, depending on your percentage, whatever percentage, like your roofing, 40% is, you know, it's part of your expenses, lawn care, all that kind of stuff. And also your mortgage. So you're paying, you know, your mortgage interest. And so, you know, it's all, it's all your, you know, so you're, if you buy a house and 40% of the expenses are, you know, paid for, but you're also getting rent, right? And so you're getting, the person's paying your rent. And so you're paying your mortgage or whatever. And then you hit this depreciation schedule. I used to say to my accountant, I understand, cuz we're, you know, I know what I'm taking home every month. And why is this $700? And it was because the property is constantly being depreciated, even though it's constantly going up in value or holding its value. And so, you know, it's, it's a great way to get ahead. And I, I think you know, I don't know how to promote the word, this word, but you know, owner occupancy is a way of really getting neighborhoods kind of in better shape, under control, more community. You know, I just, I think it's a great thing and people understand the tax implications, you know? And we weren't cheating.
Yeah. One, one other thing, the, you'll, if you look at let's see here. Line 12 is mortgage interest. That's acquisition debt. There's no acquisition debt in column A. That's I, yeah, I had a mortgage when I bought it and that mortgage went away a long time ago. But column B is a, is another property and there is acquisition debt for that. And I collect rent on that. And so that $4,300 in this case is 100% deductible. That results in a tax loss on property B, which is why the the way I was describing, it doesn't quite add up cuz there's a, there's a tax loss in B that all goes together when, at, at the end. But it, normally, you know, someone with a mortgage be very common for someone with a, you know, a two-family or something. They're, they're, they're probably paying a mortgage. There may be a 30-year mortgage or something at this point. I've owned the property 51 years. That, the acquisition debt is gone. But if I had mortgage interest, well, 60% of that would come out of here, just like property taxes. Because we're not deducting mortgage interest anymore. Well, yeah, I can, I can deduct mortgage interest. So again, this is a, I think it's the best thing since sliced bread.
Okay. Bruce.
Fred's explained this to me previously, so I got a, a second bind of cherry tonight. And I think then, as I do now, that I agree with you, Fred. And I've practiced some fraction of this. But I also agree that this is not fully appreciated. And in order to get this more fully appreciated, it sounds, I used to give courses in MSSC. I don't know whether that still happens, but the town used to provide opportunities for people to, to, to propose courses that they might teach. And this would seem to be an extremely appropriate one because it's not just elevating the opportunities for private citizens to do, I don't know, whatever interesting art project or something that might add to their life. This actually could stimulate positivity in town from a development, from a from a civic life point of view. So I don't know whether you're inclined to do this, but clearly the next step in this is to solve the problem or to work towards solving the problem of of lack of public appreciation. And I know we had a a conversation in the earlier part of the year about enabling the duplexification of houses and so forth. In other words, basically creating the opportunities for owner occupancy rentals. That received some positive response from members of the board. It just was coupled with a lot more complication complexities that 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 caused it not to be recommended to move forward. However, something like this in tandem, I think, would be a good thing. And thinking about how the the public appreciation of this opportunity might be broadly more broadly made manifest is something that I I encourage you to think about.
We do have the ADU. I mean, ADUs are are allowed pretty pretty broadly right now. So for my single family house, I could go build an ADU, get a mortgage on it and charge rent and a lot of Schedule E every year. Yeah, yeah.
I just I wanted to just add here that we 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 spent a lot of time talking and as we should, talking about affordability of of rent in this town. And 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 the creation of housing. And if you create housing out of existing buildings on existing land. You know, that's that's the least expensive form of housing creation it is possible to create. So that's just that that's another reason why this is very much something to look at as a as an objective.
Jesse.
Just you can add to your course for the town that, yes, owner occupied, very tax advantaged. It works perfectly well for non owner occupied responsible landlords as well, can be beneficial for the town and the investor. Bringing us full circle, so I own a couple houses. I couldn't afford to do another one now in Amherst because of this same issue. The the costs have just gone up so much for house, it doesn't make sense anymore. So again, just bring us back to this whole conversation of trying to keep the housing market somehow where it is. And that my sense is totally driven by the conversion to to rental units. Keep talking.
Janet.
So when I was in Somerville, I think there was like a a tax break of like eighteen percent on tax on the property taxes. And so that was really nice. And then it's up to like thirty or thirty five percent if you're for owner occupancy. And so the tax, the city is trying to encourage it by lowering your tax bill, you know, quite significantly. So it's another another way of getting to there.
Okay. Do you see any hands on the Zoom, Pam? I think we're pretty much done with the board conversation about this at the moment for tonight. And we have two members of the public on the Zoom left. If either of you want to make any public comment about the tax advantages of owner occupancy. Please raise your hand. Or anybody in in the room. Okay. All right, we don't see I don't see any hands. I see one hand, Chris.
I just wanted to confirm that you all have agreed to meet on November twenty ninth. Is that correct?
I think that's true.
Have you agreed to meet on November twenty ninth to continue the discussion about housing?
Yes, I believe we have.
Good, thank you.
Let's see any objections. And, you know, we canceled the last meeting this month, the previous meeting. We could talk about these things over Zoom too. So, I mean, we're kind of getting to the point where we're not quite so focused on a big map in the middle of the table. So, you know, if if it fits in the agenda, we could we could think about talking about it before November twenty ninth. Just a comment.
So in other words, meet on November twenty ninth.
Well, let's plan to meet, you know, put it on your calendars and and then you know, I mean, we don't know how much conversation we're going to need to get to wherever we're going.
That's right. Well, Nate had suggested earlier today that we could do this and possibly do it better on Zoom, especially if we had images that we wanted to show you. So perhaps as we move through this process and we start to create images, we'll let you know whether this is going to be in person or on Zoom. But I'm interested to hear that you're not committed to having it in person. And one
Yeah, I mean, what I was thinking was like our next meeting, I mean, you're probably not going to be ready to talk about this again in the next meeting. But like our regularly scheduled meetings could include some of this in the in the agendas. Boy, that provoked a couple of hands. Aaron and then Bruce.
I think at the in person meeting, one of the prime things that we should zero in on is what is the purpose of the the university? I think that's a big one. What what
Of the overlay.
Yes, the
Who's the target?
Who is the targeted population that we want to encourage there? That's something we should all think about and that's good to discuss in person. That would be like a big one.
Okay, Bruce.
Oh, I just wanted to see whether we're talking six o'clock because the I'm having trouble remembering to get here at six.
Well
Meetings are normally at six thirty and and I thought the the this one I had two two different times given.
So our in person meetings have pretty consistently been at six.
I would be interested in that. I I don't like overlays. I think we should just fix the zoning and if it's going to be a university housing district, you know. And so I would like to see an option where you just look at the kind of ugly BL and say, we'd like to rezone it. You know, to allow the things we want to see and not just put something on top of something. Because I I think our zoning bylaw is so complicated and just the idea of another layer of complexity. So what would it look like if it was just being rezoned is kind of my question.
Nate?
Yeah, I mean, I think the the one issue there might be that then anything that wouldn't be allowed in the overlay becomes, you know, nonconforming. It could be a nine point two two, so it could be expanded through a special permit. And so an overlay allows, you know, you to focus on what do you want to incentivize with the overlay? So what, you know, what's there now could still be allowed, whatever the underlying zoning allows, but you're trying to incentivize something or acquire something with an overlay. And so I actually think rezoning it would, depending on the boundaries, becomes difficult because, you know, there's five or six different zoning districts. And so an overlay is allowing, you know, something that we we say want to happen, happen. And but there still could be something else. So, you know, I guess that's a consideration for the planning board. We want to make this a base zoning. I think in East Amherst, for instance, changing the base zoning makes sense, but on University Drive, it for me, it doesn't.
Okay. Okay, time is eight twenty one. Any objections to adjourning? None noted. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.